We will call the regular village board meeting of June the eighth, 2015 to order. If anyone would rise to say a punch, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the board.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. March.
Here.
Mr. Hack.
Here.
Mr. Forsythe.
Here.
We have the minutes of the May 26, 2015 regular village board meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Now a motion to accept is written.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee March.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. March.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe.
Yes.
Counts payable and payroll.
I have a question.
Yes.
On the All Automotive Incorporated for $1,201.56. The question I only have about that is, do we go to other businesses and towns, to town and not just one business?
That's, yes.
Okay.
That's the first time we've been to them since they opened, but we frequent all the businesses for our home repair.
Okay. Thank you.
That was a battery tire repair, some brake pads, two rotors. And that was on the Crown Vic, the '09 Impala and the '11 Impala.
Thank you.
Steve, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
The Iroquois paving parks, $11,000, is that part of last year's resservice of it still?
I think that would be the retention.
That was the retention. It's not closed out yet.
Who uses a golf cart?
Police department.
Yeah, that was for the American Legion, or was it last year? We rented that extra long one to haul veterans out there.
I have circles for you.
Okay.
No, I do that after I leave the building, but I wasn't here.
Do you guys keep it in the summertime though?
Well, we have our own, but this is the extra.
Oh, yeah.
This fits a dozen.
Yeah.
So during Memorial Day parade, they always ask if we can get the golf cart.
So we have total payroll of $46,373.44. We have drill fund, $36,688.84. Water and sewer, $10,756.64. For total bills, $47,445.48. Motion to pay the bills and the payroll.
I make a motion, we pay the bills.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee March.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. March.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe.
Yes.
Public comment and/or questions on any non agenda item? Or go to reports of committees? Police report, police chief?
Nothing for today.
Okay. Engineers' report?
Some of you probably already know, I just wanted to let everyone know that the IDOT engineering agreements for the Rath G Road Reconstruction Project and for the Illinois 50 Corney Avenue Traffic Signal Project were both approved, so we can go ahead and get started on the design engineering.
Very good.
That's all.
Okay. Public Works Committee.
I do not have those. Sorry.
Okay.
We discussed the, we discussed several items that night. Sorry, pulling a blank here.
That's okay. We've got a couple of things on the agenda down the truck.
Oh, yes.
And the sidewalk, we're going to talk about down the road. I think one of the other things that was discussed was the property along the railroad tracks at the Village Oaks.
Correct.
I had sent an email to Troy asking about that. Do you want to comment on that, Troy?
Yeah, in our files, we found soil sampling and a preliminary environmental site assessment. It was done back in 1997, so that's almost 20 years old. It did show some, you know, chemicals and their little levels were kind of high in the soil, some petroleum, but they weren't real high. The thing is, I think the building was demolished, it looked like a couple of years ago, so it might be good to probably do another sort of environmental assessment, or at least have those updated or, you know, looked at again to make sure before you do anything, because you're probably going to have to do something, some sort of soil remediation with any sort of excavating you do there.
What's the cost of it?
The cost of?
Approximate.
Approximate? I would think less than $5,000, but I can, I'll get a number.
Why would we need to do it now rather than do it when we need to do it?
Well, that was actually one of the topics of discussion at the committee meeting was, you know, making use, you know, of that land for either storing, putting up a fence possibly and storing equipment there, or storing gravel.
Salted.
Whatever.
Public Works building, there was a lot of ideas that were thrown out. One of the concerns was that the concrete is still present along with the footings. So that was kind of the idea with the fence, was getting a fence up around it so it's not, people are just not, you know, having access to it unless you're going to remove the concrete pad, but then again, you're going down that route too. The other thing we talked about was the property across the street from it, we got that through the grass. How big is that? I don't know.
I don't have a size.
Yeah, it's about the size of a house lot.
Yeah, it's a house lot.
Yeah, we talked about possibly selling that as an option to fund anything we do to the property, you know, for the future.
I have a question. When the company that owned that lot turned that over to us, do they have any responsibility for that cleanup, or did that become our burden of responsibility when they gave it to us?
I believe it was our burden, since that was kind of the conditions when they gave it to us. Since it wasn't a sale, maybe? Right. But you'd have to look that up for sure. That's just, I mean, it's been two or three years before, since we've been in that meeting. And again, I don't know what kind of easements are on that either with the rid of, I know that came up. So even if we do do something with it, I'm not sure how much of it, you know?
Yeah, I can look at the records, but the primary goal, there were two goals there. The primary goal at the time was to get rid of the building. So that was, that was done at their expense. They agreed to do that, as well as to, you know, give the property to the, you know, to the village, that property and the property across the street. So I don't recall. I mean, as far as remediation is concerned, the, you know, the federal laws are pretty strict on this, and I don't know, is they have totally eliminated potential liability by the fact that it was, you know, due to.
I guess my point, my appearing to be magnanimous in giving us this lot, basically they dump a liability on us and walk away smiling.
I don't think so, Mike.
You think they would still have liability if there was remediation?
Well, yeah, no, I, there isn't going to be, it would depend upon who's doing what to it. You know, what is it that's going to be?
Soil replacement he's speaking of and stuff like that.
Well, if you were going to develop it, yes, if you were going to do anything with it.
But as far as if we were going to use it as a storage facility or?
Yeah, I can't see that there would be any.
As long as you're.
Not building.
If we don't remove the slab.
As long as you're maintaining, as long as either you get rid of the soil in a proper way, or you keep the soil on site and make sure it's not going to run off.
Right.
That's really your main concern.
I think that go back to what you said, the goal was to get that building down. You know, people wanted that building down.
Oh, yeah.
That was the trade-off, was, you know, they would take it down and then they're going to deed us the property.
Well, that's something that, you know, I think the committee needs to further look at, you know, what you want to do, I mean, as far as a fence goes, you know, possibly at least to get that.
That was my comment. I mean, Public Works is looking for more, more space, that's for sure. And they were looking at building options and stuff like that, and they have to get numbers to us before we even look at it, consider it, whatever. My recommendation was to get the fence up regardless. That way, it's not an eyesore, it's, we can park more equipment in there and not, you know, have to worry about it being touched, whether we get a couple of sultans out there or rock or whatever we're going to put on that concrete pad.
And we were gathering some numbers in regard to that.
Yeah, they're going to let us know about the fence, because my, my idea about it was, or my thought process was, regardless if we put a building or not, put a building there, we're going to do a fence anyways at some point, so why not do that first? That's the cheaper thing, you know, as far as improvements and utilizing the property. The building, they were talking anywhere between $100,000 came out and then $4,000, $4,500 was the original numbers they got, which would not be, you know, I don't think doable at this point.
I think the other, one of the other things that was talked about in the committee were parkway trees.
Yes. About looking, I think Mr. Jones brought up about going back to certain locations or doing, what was it you said, a 50-50 contribution?
He could offer that as an option.
Right. They were going to look at grants as far as trees and how much money we had towards that, and going with the properties that we've already cut the trees down at. And again, Mr. Jones brought up, he had certain locations that he were, was interested in putting them at too. So again, those are numbers and stuff that Public Works is going to get back to.
Anything else? Great. No old business, we'll move on to new business. Discussion impossible action regarding Safe Built for Building Inspection Code zoning services. We did have a meeting with a representative from Safe Built at a committee of the whole meeting last week. Safe Built has bought Independent Inspections who currently does, you know, the inspections for the village, so Independent Inspections has become part of Safe Built. At this point in time, our pricing is holding as it has been, but there is a potential down the road as the company reviews different communities that Independent Inspection Services, you know, those prices may start to change, so that may be something that we as a board, you know, may have to look at, looking maybe at another service or at least keeping an eye on.
Do we find out how much time we have left on that contract?
No, I went away the next day.
We will find that out, though. We have, I know we have a little bit of time, so we'll definitely take a look at that and discuss it. As far as code enforcement goes, you know, pricing wise, they were high, and it just doesn't make sense, you know, as a village to pay that for code enforcement. As we go along, we may, may use a little bit of their zoning services. We're doing that on an at need basis. We don't have to commit to any kind of long-term contract or anything in regards to that. Anybody have anything else to add to that?
Yeah, you know what, I do want to back up, I'm sorry. I do have some of my notes on the Public Works Committee.
Okay.
We did talk about adding language in our ordinance for the tree heights off the sidewalk and off the road. It appears that the ordinance does not specify heights that we can find anywhere. We thought they did, but they, we can't find that anywhere. It was suggested seven feet off the sidewalk, 13 feet off the streets. So maybe something that comes back to the board, this body of the.
Well, I think we can, we can have a discussion about that and maybe give direction, you know, to the attorney, you know, to add that to the ordinance.
The other thing real quick before we talk about that was, we brought Nycor for that generator on Wilmington Road. They're looking at July, if I was correctly, for the gas. I thought it was late June. Late June. Unless they pushed it back again, I didn't get enough.
I think Public Works told us July.
Okay, maybe Jim Heard.
Yeah.
Our other engineer. Okay.
Anything else?
No, I'm sorry, that was it.
So we'll go back to a discussion in regards to that height of trees, and we did, I did think that it was part of the ordinance, but as we looked back into the ordinances, I could not find it specified in the ordinance. I think maybe it was a rule of thumb, you know, that we used, you know, do we need it as part of an ordinance to?
Enforce?
Enforce it, yeah, obviously, yeah, to enforce it. But, yeah, I think, I think it would be clear, a clearer definition, you know, to put out to the public, you know, if we were to put it into the form of the ordinance.
The more I keep thinking about it, I don't know if I like putting a specific number to it, because you have different types of trees, and you have trees that are supposed to look this way and trees that are supposed to look that way. Like, you take a Bradford pear and you try to trim it seven to 14 feet, you don't have nothing left of that tree compared to a maple or an oak or anything. So I, I don't know how you put a specific number to it. I don't know if it's something we, we lean on the code enforcement guy, you know, if, if we're aware of and.
Right, and I think the seven, the seven foot was always, you know, discussed because of, as you're walking down the sidewalk, you know, is it going to hit me in the head? You know?
Of course.
Or put an eye out. Right. So seven foot was, you know, that kind of height. You're going to have to be at least six foot at a minimum for most people.
The thing is too, like, I feel with that tree, if it's in the parkway correctly, it'll never, probably encroach over the curb or the sidewalk, because the way it grows, I put a few of them in on a relatively narrow parkway, and with that tree, it's not an issue. I know what you're saying. Maybe we should take a two-pronged approach. First, attack the sidewalk for safety, and then take a look at over the curb.
How's our code written as far as trees in the parkway? People have to have them. Devil's advocate here, we're telling somebody they have to put a tree in, now we're telling them they have to pay to trim it.
Well, I mean, I think almost common courtesy, you know, is, you have, you have some people who don't have the common courtesy, and I think you almost have to have that ability, you know, to make them have the common courtesy.
And it's not just the trees in the parkway, it's the trees that are out there a lot as well, right?
Correct. And if it's over the sidewalk.
Yeah.
We're talking about that tree.
And I think if somebody walks a lot, there's a lot of violations that need to be taken care of, but I think we need, you know, it's going to make the code enforcement officers' job harder if we don't have a specific number. You know, I mean, use common sense, but at some point, you got to have, you got to give the guy something to work off of.
Exactly.
You've got some over in the subdivision by you, Steve. It blocks the stop sign. You can't even, you know, somebody's coming up to the stop sign, they don't see it because the trees block it.
Doesn't the village generally trim the trees where the stop signs are?
They do. Yep.
Bob said that they, even with the ones on the regular parkway, if they're getting close to the trucks or anything like that, they go in and cut them themselves.
We're not looking to whack anybody. We're looking to have, we're looking to have a guideline where we can say, hey, this is a problem, you know, can you fix it? You know, I mean, that's, that's the whole idea behind it. So what's the pleasure of the board? Do we want to direct the attorney to add the seven foot over the sidewalk to the current ordinance and bring it back to the next board meeting for adoption?
I'm in favor of that.
Me too.
I'm in favor of the seven foot, but I think we need to do a little bit more research on.
The street side.
The streets.
Yeah, and I think that, that makes sense. The side.
Seven, I'm fine with seven foot.
Okay. You can bring that to us next meeting. Yep. Thank you.
Now, just to ask, cost wise?
I don't know what's in the ordinance right now. I mean, I'd have to look at it to see.
We couldn't find it.
Exactly where this is going to go.
Well, there's an ordinance.
Well, it should be one that says that, that you know, that cannot impede the.
I believe that's what it says.
The sidewalk.
No, I don't know if it says. Nope, Kevin's got it.
Paul, you got it?
No, Kevin had it.
We'll let you read that.
My other question is, should we wait till we have the information on the street heights prior to changing the code or adding to the code instead of changing it twice?
The information on the street height, though, came directly from the head of Public Works in 2007. We never even talked about that.
Right.
And he was the one that said, we need 13 foot to not knock it off. Kevin would probably know better. What is the height of village trucks and lights?
They're all of 12 feet. My only concern is, like I said, different species of trees are supposed to look different ways, and if you elevate them too much, I think you're taking away from that, but we also have to make it safe, so.
Yeah, the ordinance is, simply says that if it overhangs in any way to impede or interfere with traffic or pedestrian traffic.
Okay, so how would a code?
It shall be trimmed by the, by the owner of the abutting premises or the premises which the tree, their shrub goes.
So what would the enforcement on that be if we didn't have heights in there with that language, if we gave it to our code enforcer?
Well, I think there's a, you know, obviously a judgment, but when you walk down the street, if the tree limbs hit you in the head, you know that it's impeding. It's very easy, I mean, really, the code enforcement officer can walk down the sidewalk and.
So you just.
Now, if he's five foot three, you might say, well, you know, this is.
So it's personal preference, because the mayor and I are going to walk under a whole lot more trees than trustee Hupkey.
Exactly.
Here we go.
If Jabar comes by, I guess seven feet.
So I guess, I guess, I guess the question is, do we need a specific height to make it enforceable?
I believe you could enforce it without it, but I also see no problem with simply saying, you know, adding a sentence that says, it shall be implied that if it overhangs less than seven feet, it shall be deemed to impede. I can write that, and that will do it, but I think you're going to get, you know, a pretty clear, I know from experience in other villages and also in my own, they do go around the sidewalks and they write tickets on a regular, warrant, usually it's warning tickets.
Right.
You know, to tell the, tell the homeowners to, you know, trim the, the trees and the bushes, and they don't seem to have a lot of trouble, you know, indicating that it's impeding. Every once in a while, you'll argue, they'll get into arguments a little bit, but generally, I'm going to tell you, those are the ones that are coming out, you know, like a.
A hedge.
A bush or a hedge that's right on the sidewalk and is growing like maybe two inches onto the sidewalk, and the homeowner will say, well, they can just walk a couple of them. They don't have to be on that very edge of the sidewalk.
I'm, I'm more concerned, I'm more concerned with the sidewalk language.
Yeah.
Than the street language, because the street language, most people are not going to go out and trim a tree 14 feet up. We don't have the equipment to do that. If that becomes an issue, that's going to probably be a village issue where we're going to go out and we're going to take care of it as a village. We're not going to make the homeowner go out and climb a 20-foot ladder and trim a tree. Sidewalks is a different issue. Sidewalks is common sense, common courtesy. So do we need a specific number in the ordinance to make it enforceable? Or do we leave it as it is, tell code enforcement, if you see a tree overhanging a sidewalk that you feel is going to impede pedestrian traffic, contact the homeowner and instruct them and ask them to trim the tree.
Specific number?
Seven feet.
Seven feet.
Black and white.
This way, there's no way around it.
Let's add the seven feet to the sidewalk language, the language that you just talked about.
Yeah. Okay, got it.
I'm not worried about, I'm not worried about the street side particularly at all. All right. So anyway, we're on item A of new business, I think we've covered that. Anybody have any further input there? Okay, we're on item B, discussion of possible action regarding change of village endorsement of the Eliana Tollway. We had a committee of the whole meeting prior to this meeting, we had a discussion, we need to come to a decision as far as how we are going to proceed as a village board. We have an ordinance on the books, or excuse me, a resolution on the books in support of the Eliana with the understanding that there would be an interchange at Illinois Route 50. Do we want to change that resolution, adopt a new resolution?
I make the motion, we adopt a new resolution opposing the Eliana Tollway.
Now, in that motion, are you adding, opposing it and asking for the record of decision to be vacated?
Record of decision, no. No, I think we should hang on to that, but the resolution, just to let them know, we have the majority of the people that don't want it, and it's my opinion from our committee of the whole meetings, from people talking, making statements, and also from all the literature, also now that the limbo, we can't sit here and be, and just sit here.
Part of, part of the limbo to me is the record of decision. You know, as long as that record of decision is in place and not vacated, we are in limbo. You know, I mean, we can say we oppose it, but.
That's why I thought leaving our, our ordinance in place and going after the record of decision was more what we're looking at. We're tired of it, if we're not going to do it, then.
I stay with the, make a motion to have a resolution to not agree and not have, not endorse the record of decision, not record of, I'm sorry.
It's okay. So a resolution to oppose.
Oppose.
The Eliana Expressway.
Yes.
The construction of the Eliana Expressway.
Yes.
There's a motion on the table, or the motion, is there any discussion for a second?
I have a question.
Yes.
What would the negative impact to the village be trying to remove this limbo thing in addition to what Roy's proposed?
I don't necessarily, to me, just to me personally, the record of decision is the thing that bothers me, that, just that being hung out, just like the airport issue, being hung out there with, that's still kind of hanging over our heads. I mean, to me, it's, it's just irritating, you know, that all of these communities, not just us, but all the communities, all the townships, you know, everybody, all the residents of all these places are being held basically hostage by the state, and it just, it just drives me crazy.
Well, it's a lot of.
It drives me crazy on the airport issue, and it drives me crazy here. Make a decision, you know, one way or the other, you're going to do it or you're not going to do it.
I'll say again, and that's kind of what I was going with, but.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, keeping the resolution there and the record of decision out of there, because that's telling them that if it goes in, this is what we want. If you're not going to do it, then that's not wholesome limbo.
So we have a motion that has been put forth by trustee Hupkey to adopt a resolution to oppose the Eliana Expressway. Do you want to leave that motion?
Yes.
As is, okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by trustee Hack.
Okay. Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe.
Yes.
Mr. March.
Yes.
And Mr. Jones.
Yes.
to oppose the Eliana Expressway. Do you wanna leave that motion-
Yes.
As is? Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Trustee Hack.
Okay. Mr. Upkey?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
And Mr. Jones?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we go on record or whatever to try to make, get the record of decision vacated.
So would that be in the form of a resolution also, or could that be added to the resort, or the motion that was made previously? I'm looking at you. Oh, yeah, I-
Well, they're going to two different people, right?
Well, and that's, and that's my question, because the record of decision is the-
Federal Highway.
Federal Highway. So it would, to me, it would make sense to make it a separate resolution.
I would second that resolution.
So there's been a motion by Trustee March and seconded by Trustee Forsyth to adopt a resolution directed to the federal department, what is that?
Federal Highway-
Administration?
Authority.
Federal, Federal Highway Authority.
Okay. A resolution directed to them to ask them to vacate the record of decision on the Eliana Expressway.
I think the proper term is to rescind it.
Rescind it.
I'll accept those changes.
Okay, thank you. You accept that? I'm seconded?
And directing the attorney to prepare these-
Yes, we are.
I have no problem with the general resolution, but if there's anything that a person or you want in the resolution opposing the Eliana particular, you know, for the particular reasons that you want, yeah, the reasons that you want stated, let me know, you know, so. I mean, I can obviously do something in general, but if you've got, if there are some particular things. There were a lot of things said, and I don't know, you know, what, what aspects are there that are more pressing?
We'll get those to you.
Yeah, you can have done a email to me.
That's fine. And then we will bring those resolutions to the board at the next meeting to be read and to be acted on.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item C, discussion of possible action regarding code enforcement officer position slash job description. The job description, we're gonna send to the Administrative Oversight Committee. We're gonna review that and try to tighten it up a little bit. It's kind of, it's very vague, so we're gonna work on maybe a little bit of language for that. As far as the hiring, I'm gonna have to ask for that to be tabled until the next meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Trustee March and again by Trustee Jones.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Special event permit and amplifier permit, Robert Beniziano, partial street closure at 504 The Hague on 6/20/2015. I spoke to the chief, and he had no problem with the street closure. I think the one thing on the amplifier permit, there was no end time on it.
I'm getting back from chief, who's on my desk today, ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock? Okay. So the, the end time of ten o'clock on the amplifier permit. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Forsyth, seconded by Trustee Hack.
This is for the street closure and the amplifier.
And the amplifier permit, yes. With the end time of ten o'clock on the amplifier.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Upkey?
Yes.
Item E, Public Works Truck Lease Purchase. This was something that came out of the Public Works Committee. Should have this information. It came from-
I'm gonna suggest we let Trustee Hack kind of go over this. He's more familiar with this information than I think any of us are, if you don't mind.
The price is actually, it's right, they're competitive.
So explain, just explain to everybody what we're talking about.
What we're getting.
Public Works has requested purchasing a new international, I guess it's seventy-four-hundred to replace a, it's a two-and-a-half-ton truck. It's, it'll be equipped with the dump body, the salt spreader, the snow pile, all equal strobe lights, everything it needs. And it will be replacing a truck that I believe Bob told me is twenty-two years old.
I think he said ninety-seven.
So it's time, but, and I know the trucks that I've spucked out just recently, they're actually, they are using rush truck centers to buy the chassis and Kekke truck equipment to outfit it. Their truck total is actually about four grand cheaper than the stuff that I've spucked out lately. So I don't have an issue with it. My, my concern is, or the only question I have is, did we ever decide, because I see in here that they have a three-year lease and a four-year lease?
We didn't talk about the, how many years.
The lease.
I know we have it budgeted where it's twenty-five from the streets, twenty-five thousand from water, so fifty thousand a year. That being said, I, I don't have a problem going with three years. So we're still following our budget, and why pay interest right out here?
But the interest rate's actually cheaper on a four-year, that's what, doesn't make sense to me.
What is the-
The payment's plus.
On a three-year-
Well, you're, you're paying, on the four-year, you're seventy, a hundred and forty-
Right.
And on the three-year, you're-
You're paying less interest rate, but you're paying more interest, because you're paying it from one year.
Well, it's about two thousand dollars cheaper if you go on the three, three-year.
You're faster on your math.
Yeah.
So that would be the benefit of the three.
Okay. And again, it falls under-
Under the budget.
Under the budget.
Yeah. Discussion?
Uh, the only thing that I asked, I know with our police vehicles, we really didn't have much time to look into their options, but as far as getting rid of the old vehicle, putting into auction, Trustee Hack's gonna look into that again, as far as what company that they send theirs to, to get the best price for that vehicle.
Auctions tend to work, you know, really well.
I mean, we traded the police vehicles and they got nothing for them. I mean, we got something, but nothing compared to what we could've gotten. So I think this is the better avenue.
So do we, does Public Works have a, like a capital plan for-
Yeah, and this is, this was actually, this was part of last year, wasn't it?
Last year's budget.
Yeah.
As I said, Streets had twenty-five thousand dollars going towards a truck for a year, and Water had twenty-five thousand, so it's a combined of fifty thousand dollars.
So I mean, is this, so, you know, three years after this is paid off, I mean, are we gonna, do they have a plan then to buy another, to replace another truck, or?
They had fifty thousand dollars in, every year, for the next five years in their plan.
I don't know if I have it with me, but if you did talk about, I know they had a five-year plan-
Okay.
As far as equipment replacement. I don't remember what was on it.
I mean, if they're keeping trucks for twenty years, I mean, and I mean, how many trucks do we have?
I think there's four two-and-a-half-ton trucks, four big dump trucks.
I mean, it seemed like, the way he was talking, like all of them are old.
Mm.
Ninety-seven, there's one from the two thousands, two thousand and six.
I think the newest one's like oh-six or oh-seven.
Yeah.
But there, I do know there's two of them that are twenty-plus years.
So yeah, I mean, that would definitely, it's probably part of the plan-
Okay.
You know, like, once this one is paid for, to replace the next one. But I know there is a capital equipment plan in place. Any other discussion? Not a motion to proceed with the lease purchase-
Motion.
Of the-
Second.
Proposed truck for the three years at the payment of forty-six, three, ten, oh-four, at the interest rate of two point nine four. Motion by Trustee Hack, seconded by Trustee Forsyth.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Upkey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
And Mr. March?
Yes.
Item F, sidewalk replacement program. This is another discussion that came out of the Public Works Committee.
Yes, and what they're submitting to, sorry, I don't mean to-
No, you're fine, you're fine.
What they're submitting to us, from my understanding, is the proposals they got from last construction season, which we just ran out of time to get it implemented with the specs and all that stuff like that. So this is coming from Robinson as last year's proposal.
Yeah, I would just need to do some updates, and we could get it going real quick.
Here's a question or a discussion that I had on Tuesday, I think it was, whatever day, one, one-
Monday.
Monday was the committee. So Tuesday, I was speaking with the treasurer and with Mr. Hinky about this. And the concern is, we can do this if we're not going to do the Pietro Wilmington Road sidewalk, you know, but we don't have the money to do this appropriated-
Because you need to supplement that grant.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. So it depends on when, you know, even when that grant's going to come through. But the grant's not gonna come through till October, you know, then we're not, we're not gonna be able to proceed with it in this budget here, so we would be able to do, move forward with this. And I know in the last-
I thought in the budget, we had a hundred thousand for sidewalk, and fifty thousand of that was for this, and fifty thousand was-
Like fifty thousand was from last year that we didn't use.
According to the conversation, I'm just relating the conversation that Marcy, the treasurer, and Bob were having, that was what they had talked to me about. That it was this, or if we were gonna do the sidewalk, the Wilmington Road sidewalk, that this would not be feasible with the current budget.
Are we sharing the numbers? Because I think it's the fifty-
I'm, I'm just going, I'm going from what the treasurer-
Maybe we should table this until the next meeting.
And that's, and that's what I was gonna say. And I think we need to kind of follow up on that Pietro Wilmington. I know the last email that I'd gotten from the engineer was, it was probably going to be fall.
If, yeah, if it comes, he said it'd come at any time, but he wouldn't anticipate it before fall, with all the reviews they're doing.
Let me ask you, I'm sorry, come on.
Okay.
Let me ask you a question. If, if we do have to sit on it, and if there's only enough money to do one or the other this year, can we implement the sidewalk portion of it, this plan, in fall, if the grant does not come in? Is there enough time? Are we in the same position as we were last year?
Last year, we got it going really late. I mean, I would say we wanna get this moving by late July or August.
And that was, and that was my discussion with Mr. Hinky. So we got, and that was my point. I don't think we need to make a decision on this tonight, but I wanted it to be discussed, you know, by the board. And then let's take a look, you know, at the budget numbers again, and let's take a look at maybe the timing of that Pietro Wilmington grant, and then make a decision.
And the other thing, if that grant does come in, that, that's gonna take more engineering, it's gonna take a review from the Little County Highway Department, because it's their road and their permit process. So even if that came in, say in July, we wouldn't have time to get it constructed this year because of all the-
But we still don't have the numbers correct. We still don't know. So that's why I make the motion, we table this till the next meeting.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Upkey, seconded by Trustee Hack.
Mr. Upkey?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
And Mr.-
Yes.
Pietro Car Club, one day-
Let's ask the question.
Oh, sure.
So did he just say that even if the grant comes through, we're not gonna be able to do the Wilmington Road project this year? Is that what you just said?
More than likely, yes.
So then why are we doing sidewalk program?
Because we wanna get the numbers straight.
Right, we're gonna, I'm gonna have-
Well, no, I understand, but it sounds to me like-
No, we have, we, I think we have enough time. Next meeting-
Yeah.
We will have a firm, a firm proposal, you know, on the sidewalk replacement program to bring back to the board for action. This is my intention.
If we do that, how soon can you break ground and start putting in sidewalks?
Sidewalk replacement program?
My point being, it seems like in the past, it gets done about twenty minutes before we're starting Thanksgiving turkey. And it should be done in July or August.
Yeah.
And that is, and that's the reason, you know, that I've been talking with Bob. We wanna get this, if we're gonna do this, we wanna get this moving, you know, sooner the better, to get it done this summer. So if we, you know, get a firm plan, submit it to the board next meeting, get it approved, then it'll go immediately into action.
Good.
Okay. Pietro Car Club, one-day liquor license, seven-twenty-five, two thousand and fifteen. Again, I spoke with the chief, and he has reviewed this and has no issues with it, and recommends that it be approved.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Trustee Forsyth, seconded by Trustee Upkey.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Upkey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Item H, discussion of possible action regarding village administrator job description. That, too, is gonna be taken up by the Administrative Oversight Committee and be brought back to the board for action. Item I, appoint village president pro temp. When past village president, Mr. Duran, made his appointments, he did not appoint a village president pro temp, and I feel that that's something that we definitely need to have in place. And I would like to appoint Peter March as the president pro temp.
It was my understanding at that meeting that Mayor Duran had stated, and Legal could back me up on this, maybe.
I had a discussion with Legal about this issue. It is pretty much a customary thing to have a president pro temp. That was Mr. Duran's own personal wish.
Okay.
Yeah, it was.
Okay.
So-
Which is up to the president, by the way.
Motion to ratify the appointment of Peter March as the president pro temp.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Jones, seconded by Trustee Hack.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
And Mr. Upkey?
Yes.
And then after the village trustee replacement is made, then all of the committees and other appointments will be reorganized and redone at that time. Questions in the press? Correspondence, communications, and petitions. Once again, first, Barbers Market, the Saturday, downtown North Street by the Legion, from eight to noon. We also have community garage sales this weekend in the village.
Eight to four.
Eight to four. Anybody else have anything?
I have two things. First, where are we at with the rebidding for the trees? Did it ever get to the paper?
Yes, it did.
I've had, I think, four or five packets were picked up.
It gets closed out on June the eighteenth, I believe. It was the last day to submit.
Okay. And then, secondly, I know everybody in the community, anybody that has kids in our school district knows him, but I wanna congratulate Mr. Tim Nagra. Today was his last day. He's, he's served thirty-five years in our school district.
Tim Nagra.
N-A-G-R-A. Anybody that knows him, I mean, the guy's a stand-up guy. He went above and beyond what any teacher should have to do. We're gonna miss him. I don't think you can replace a guy like Mr. Nagra, but we're, we're very fortunate to have had him for thirty-five years, so.
Absolutely. One of the other things that I was gonna mention to the trustees, Eric Brown from the Buckstein Group is planning on being here Thursday, June the eighteenth. I'm waiting to get a time from him. It's either gonna be six or seven o'clock. So as soon as I get that time verified, you know, I'll let all of the trustees know. But he'll be here to kind of review what has happened as far as the Buckstein Group with the village, and also answer any questions the trustees may have. I know Trustee Hack is going to be on vacation that week. But if for any reason you can't be here, he's gonna make sure we have a quorum, which I think we're okay on. And we wanna make sure, you know, that we have all of our questions kind of written out or whatever in your mind. If you're not gonna be here, just get your questions. It's gonna be, we'll make sure they get asked and answered. I've also been in talks with the park board and the school board, and it's my intention to have a joint board meeting sometime in the near future with the full park board. I think that's gotta be our focus.
Have you had an opportunity to discuss with the school about the impact fees yet?
No, I have not yet. I'm hoping to have a meeting with, later this, later this week or beginning of next week.
I've got a meeting at the library, you'd say they're gonna be Thursday or Friday.
Anything else for the board?
What's the interest been on village administrator? How many?
Uh, we've probably got, yeah, I was gonna say at least 20, I would say, so far, yeah. And that closes out next Monday, so then we'll start looking at that process, you know, from that point on. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Forsyth, seconded by trustee Hack.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
And Mr....
Yes.